Calling the December fourteenth meeting of the city council to order at seven oh four. Please rise and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would like to welcome everybody here tonight. Thank you for coming. Um, we have a correction that we um need to make on the agenda. Inadvertently Molly Nixon was still on on the agenda and so we need to take her off and add Mr. Braden Marvel on. And we don't need to do anything with that because that was an editorial mistake. Okay, let's get to the public comments. Oh, I'm sorry. I always forget the roll call. Like you guys gotta like Tommy, you're here. Mrs. Pam Conley.
Yes, I am here.
Mr. Gross is not. Hopefully he'll show up. Mrs. Hamel.
Present.
Mr. Braden Marvel.
Here.
Mrs. Powell.
Here.
Grace.
Here.
And.
I am here. Alright, now we'll move on to the public comments. The council welcomes and encourages the people, the public to speak during the public comment and public hearing portion of the agenda. However, council policy is to hear the public comment and not to act on the public comment at this time. Concerns brought before the council during the public comment portion of the agenda will be referred to the city manager for action. If after communicating with the city manager, no resolution is reached, the concern will be elevated to the mayor and then eventually to the council for action. Those citizens wishing to speak on agenda and non-agenda items will be allowed a maximum of four minutes each to address their concerns. This is the only time during the council meeting that citizens are allowed to address the council. Please state your name and address for the record if you would like a response. Are there any members of the public that would like to make a comment?
And all good. I'm full of joy tonight because I belong to Cedar Springs and Cedar Springs belongs to me. I wouldn't want to be anywhere else during COVID and I wouldn't want to be anywhere else.
This year. Been a rough year.
You know what? I feel like we've all grown. We've learned. We bounced our ideas off. They've collided sometimes. But we're, we're, we're okay. We're not damaged by it. We, we still were a community. We love each other. We, as long as we stick together and really explore things, we can do anything. I'm really proud of our community, the way it looks. I'm proud of all the improvements that have been made in our town. And all of the money that's been spent, it's been well spent and just the streets and I, I love the lights. And the, the whole, the beauty of all the lights downtown and the streets, it's, it's just breathtaking. I love being in a small town, which is growing and it's going to grow a lot more I hear because more housing developments are coming. And um I just wanted to thank you all. It's not an easy job. You stayed with it. We welcome our new member here, Braden. And we have a whole new box that we're opening for the new year of all kinds of possibilities and working together. And I just want to say that, you know, as new groups come in, new members come in, new officers. We don't always know what we're doing. We have to learn. And so when I look back over the long history, all of the way back to nineteen thirty-six and there were some things missed here and there. This wasn't right and not enough money to the library here. And we have new people all along the way. I don't look at that as people that are hatred or they don't, are hateful or they don't want to, they don't want to give to the library or what else. They don't know. We're growing together. We're learning. And some of it's in the past and we have to go dig it out. And we can do that and we can still, you know, care about each other and work together. And so that's, that's my, that's what I'm looking forward to. We've been doing it. And I just want to say that I really appreciate all that you've done, all of you. Thank you. And Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays and everything.
Good evening, Sue Wolf. Um, and she's a tough act to follow because I'm just kind of here to do the same thing and say thank you. Thank you, thank you. I came for so, so many times and I just am so thankful that it's done. You rose above all the issues. You found a way to work it out. I think everybody's happy. I'm so excited about your leadership. I attended the planning commission meeting sometime last month and it's an atmosphere of respect and hope and I'm so grateful and um town looks beautiful and the library's almost resolved and it's a great way to start out the new year. And we couldn't have done it without your leadership and your persistence and, and your desire to serve. And so, thank you, thank you, thank you. Um, that's it.
Anyone else? Are there any members of the public on Zoom that would like, like to make a public comment? Um, either raise your hand or take off your speaker or unmute yourself. There from. Captioning on the bottom there. Thank you. Raise their hand or unmute themselves at this time. Okay, hearing no additional public comment, we will move on to public hearings. There are no scheduled public hearings today. So we will move on to the adoption of the agenda, of the, of the agenda. I'm sorry, I got. Or something today. Okay, um, we do have one correction. Um, we need to add an item on six C D I I I. And that, that's actually on the consent agenda, isn't it? Okay, sorry. Doing great, Madam Mayor. Do, do, was there anything else on the agenda we needed to correct? Okay, then I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. That's on the consent, consent. Okay, now, so it's a correction. It's um adding, if you look at um D I I I, it's adding um James Hilliker to the election commission. Sorry about that. No, that's okay. Um, so do I have a motion to adopt the agenda? I'll make that motion. I'll support. Any discussion? Yeah, is there any discussion on that? Okay, I will. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we're still short a couple boards seats, um, but we're working on it. So Pam or Mrs. Conley?
Yes.
We're doing a roll call on the agenda. Okay, sorry, I thought you meant, yes, like what do you want? Okay, Mrs. Hamel.
Yes, I seconded, so yes.
Mr. Marvel.
Yes.
Mrs. Powell.
Yes.
Mrs. Grace.
Yes.
Mrs. Atchison? Oh, she has in the. Passes. Six to zero. Okay. I'm gonna be doing a lot of flipping pages, guys. Bear with me. Still in training. Okay, then, um, the consent, consent agenda. Do we need to make any additions or would you like to discuss any of these items? We just approved that? Yeah. 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 With the, with the added consent agenda item, I will make a motion to accept the consent agenda with the addition presented in the agenda. I'll second. If you agree. Signify by saying aye. No. If you agree, signify by saying aye. Aye. You oppose? No. That's six zero. You know, we're on action. Action items. Um, the motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-one, a resolution accepting the retirement of city chief Marty Frazier from the Cedar Springs Fire Department and to recognize his forty-four years of service. I will make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-one, a resolution accepting the retirement of fire chief Marty Frazier from the Cedar Springs Fire Department and to recognize his forty-four years of service. I'll second that motion. Any discussion? Wow, that's all I gotta say. Come on up here, Marty. Got pictures? Have I got camera? We gotta get some cake. There needs to be some cake. I think the fire department's gonna do something. You're gonna do. Oh, sorry. You can sign something later. What are you gonna do? Um, a resolution accepting the retirement of fire chief Marty Frazier from the Cedar Springs Fire Department and to recognize his forty-four years of service. Whereas fire chief Marty Frazier has devoted an extraordinary forty-four years of his life to the service of our community, serving the Cedar Springs Fire Department. And whereas Chief Frazier has exhibited unwavering dedication, exceptional leadership and unparalleled commitment to ensuring success of the Cedar Springs Fire Department. And whereas Chief Frazier exemplary service has not only contributed to the growth and development of the Cedar Springs Fire Department, but has also left a permanent mark on the hearts and minds of all those who have had the privilege of working alongside him. And whereas Chief Frazier has demonstrated an unwavering commitment to the safety and the well-being of the residents of Cedar Springs, leading with dedication and courage throughout his distinguished career. And whereas Chief Frazier has played a pivotal role in the growth and success in the Cedar Springs Fire Department, implementing innovative strategies, fostering teamwork and ensuring the highest standards of emergency response within our community. And whereas Chief Frazier's retirement represents the conclusion of a memorable chapter in the history of the Cedar Springs Fire Department. And it is fitting for the city of Cedar Springs to express its deep appreciation for his contributions. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Cedar Springs that the city extends its heartfelt gratitude to Chief Marty Frazier for his forty-four years of dedicated service to the Cedar Springs Fire Department. Further, be it resolved that we commend Chief Frazier for his leadership, dedication and the positive impact he has had on the Cedar Springs community. Finally, may it be resolved that a copy of this resolution be presented to fire chief Marty Frazier as a token of our sincere appreciation and that it be permanently recorded in the official records of the city of Cedar Springs.
Last week or so. Excuse me, coming down with a cold, I think. Very, very much appreciated. Necessary. You guys, them guys and gals, down the fire station made me shine. I'm not taking credit. Nah, it was a group and everybody in this building was involved. Oh, excuse me, involved in some way, shape or form. For that, I appreciate it. My heart will always be with. Didn't tell me it was gonna be this tough. But my heart will always be with that fire department. Tell people I've had a good ride. It's time to get off the horse. Mrs. Powell, you might want to think about that too. Congratulations to Mayor Atchison and Pro Tem Mrs. Race. The new kid on the block. We'll see how he does. I'm not gone. I'm just not sitting in the seat anymore. Um, I wish you guys luck with the new chief. I tell people I, I would hope that I left a good footprint in the city of Cedar Springs, some way, shape or form, and they told me it was probably muddy, but that, that's okay too. Like I said, my heart's with them guys and gals. Always will be, always will be. Good ride. Each and every one of you. Appreciate it.
I think we need to install that zip line to your house. The zip line to your house.
What did she say? Sue, how come you're always the last one?
Uh, congratulations, Marty.
Happy down to your retirement.
They are like. Motion out, did we? Okay, let's do a roll call on the motion. I, I always want to get the motion out of the way before we do anything. All right, Mrs. Powell.
Okay. Yes.
Conley.
Yeah.
Mrs. Race.
Yes.
Miss is Ashley. Mr. Marvel.
Yes.
And Mayor Atchison votes yes. Thank you again, Mr. Frazier. Yeah. All right, motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three, a resolution to adopt the twenty twenty-three recommendation of the Cedar Springs Local Officers Compensation Committee. Would you like to talk on that?
Again, yes. So the Local Officers Compensation Commission meets every other year. In the odd year, so twenty twenty-three was the year. They met a couple weeks ago. And they basically set the salary for city council and mayor. The recommendation was in your packet tonight to go from um twelve hundred for council members. Increase that to thirteen hundred per year. And then the mayor from fifteen hundred up to seventeen hundred. So that's the recommendation. So we didn't.
I'll support it. Second. Right. Yeah. But do you have any discussion we want to have on that? I would just like to say that in the years, and I think Ms. Powell has been here for that too, there were quite a few years where we said, yeah, no, we're not, we're not gonna increase it. A little closer to. Years where we said, we don't, we're not gonna increase it. And Jerry Hall said, really, you need to start making sure that the headache gets some compensation or no one's gonna sign up to do it. So I think it is important that we take that recommendation. I mean, I know it's a couple hundred bucks, but it is. For years, we didn't. We just said, yeah, no. Right. Anybody else?
I think the um, it's good because when we try to get people in here um because of the delays that happened in the years past, that I think it's, you know, for you guys to say, it's not necessary. I completely understand. That's how I, I came into this. But I do believe that we need to get something in here so that we can get others to be able to help out. And um we have plenty of seats to fill, so I think it's a good thing.
Yep. Yeah. Um, I think one of the reasons that we're here is to serve the community. And um the um money wasn't the important thing. It's nice to get some reimbursement, say for paper and get, when you gotta load some ink into your computer for a hundred bucks, that's very helpful to have that to help you get through. So I would support this uh motion just to compensate us just for maybe our expenses. And that would be about it. We're here to serve the community. To cover our costs and expenses. That's it. All right, Ashley, Mrs. Mrs. Hamel. Mrs. Conley.
Yeah.
Mr. Marvel.
Yes.
Yes. Mrs. Race. And Mayor Atchison votes yes. That's a six zero. All right, um, we are on discussion items. Um, item A, marijuana extension of hours of operation. And in order to do that, we have to revise an ordinance. Did you want to speak on that, Darla?
Yeah, I'd like to do a little introduction. Um, so discussion item only tonight. Um, you, you can make a motion, but I just thought we should, we should start with some discussion. So the city council created an ordinance some time ago that defined the hours of operation for Cedar Springs marijuana businesses. It is currently um eight forty-five AM to nine fifteen PM. None of our businesses can be open later than nine fifteen. This came to my attention a couple months ago at a DDA meeting, so we did some research. I sat down with one of the marijuana um business managers and had some real good discussion. He's done some research. Um, brought to our attention um hours of operation for many other communities. Each community can set their own, so um there's quite a few that um go well past nine PM. So um that we would bring it to you guys for some discussion and see what to do with it.
Okay, my name is Cody. Um, I'm the general manager of Cedar Springs Cannabis. Um, for the longest time, we've always had a stigma around cannabis, um prohibition alcohol. We've always had the stigma that cannabis is bad, but in retrospect is we've been legal for several years. And we've had the consideration, we've had break-ins and stuff like that, but overall increase in violence is pretty much down and that, and that's in all sectors. I'm waiting for our LA rep, who I spoke with today, to get me actual figures. Uh, we should have those in the next few weeks, just with the end of the year closing up. But I wanted to kind of give a, give an idea into what we're experiencing in the cannabis industry as a whole and just see what your thoughts are. So I prepared a little speech today. Let me know what your thoughts are and we'll go from there. But uh today I come before you to address an issue that pertains to fairness, economic growth and the responsible regulations of substances within our district. I'm here to advocate for the extension of dispensary operation hours past nine A or nine PM Thursday through Saturday, allowing dispensaries to operate during social events like the New Year's celebration, aligning with other policies of many neighboring cities. As we look at the surrounding cities in the Michigan area, it's evident that many of them have recognized the need to adopt to the evolving landscape of cannabis regulations. Lowell, Sand Lake, Big Rapids, Meskeen, Kalamazoo, Ben Harbor, Utica, Manistee, Houston, or Hutton and Waterville have all extended their dispensary hours with even some allowing for twenty-four hour operations. It's crucial to note that during these extended hours and instances of violence and theft have remained at a minimum, showcasing that responsible regulation can coexist with increased accessibility. What raises a pertinent question is that is the disparity in the treatment of cannabis compared to alcohol? Um, while dispensaries are restricted to closing at nine PM, we observe that breweries and liquor stores operate well beyond these hours. Uh, the question we need to ask ourselves is shouldn't both substances, when legal and regulated, be treated equally in terms of retail hours? To foster an environment that promotes fairness and equal opportunity, we must consider the operational constraints placed on the cannabis dispensaries. If we are committed to removing the stigma associated with cannabis and promoting it as a legal and regulated substance, it is only logical that we afford it the same hours as other retail facilities. The evidence from neighboring cities demonstrates that extending dispensary hours does not lead to an increase in crime. On the contrary, it can be a catalyst for economic growth, job creation and increased revenue for our community. By embracing a more equitable approach to the retail hours of cannabis and alcohol, we are not only leveling the playing field, but also reinforcing the principles of fairness and responsible regulations. In conclusion, I urge you members of the city council to consider the evidence from neighboring cities where extended dispensary hours not only have been safe, but have contributed positively to their economics. Let us strive for equality and fairness in our policies, aligning the treatment of cannabis with that of alcohol and thereby promoting a thriving and balanced community for all. Thanks. Any questions?
State doesn't say, like the state says you could be open twenty-four hours because alcohol can't be open twenty-four hours.
In no timeframe right now that the state requires for dispensaries to open. It is only on the city to create local ordinances that pertain to their local communities. Therefore, we could set any logical hours of operation for dispensaries, but really what I'm just wanting to focus is looking at the analytics from our store and other stores around us, Monday through Wednesday, we don't need to operate past nine o'clock. We barely get any customers at that point. But during the peak days, such as Thursday through Saturday, when everybody's out doing their family activities or just doing activities in general, we would like to be able to be open. That is the same as like breweries and, you know, buying liquor. We see a lot more violence associated with, or with alcohol than we do cannabis most of the time. And I can't speak for everyone, but when you smoke a joint or whatever you make, you're probably more likely to go home than be outside. Obviously, I can't give too much information on that, but we don't see a big increase. Obviously, we've had a few break-ins in the city since we've created the ordinance, but we also have those very ordinances that protect our product in stores. We can't keep it on the retail store. That's again up to the store if they want to file that or not. But traditionally speaking, what break-ins that we've had are very limited on what they get. So.
Isn't it more similar to like buying a bottle of liquor than a glass of liquor at a brewery?
Say that again.
What you're asking for, isn't it more similar to buying a bottle of liquor somewhere and taking it versus a brewery where you would buy it and drink it there and then leave?
Yeah, that's kind of the, the whole reason why we want to be open longer is like when you're at a brewery, you're drinking, you're getting a buzz and then you're associating and most likely driving home. With dispensaries, you're buying your product and you're leaving. We're not, we're not staying open. We're not smoking in the parking lot. We're not smoking in the back room. You're grabbing your product and you're going home. So I'm just trying to, you know, we, we created and adopted this policy to sell cannabis here in Cedar Springs. But if we're truly going to remove the stigma that has been ingrained in us for so many years, we have to start creating an equal playing field for all of our companies. And let's be honest, the, like the sales tax that we generate from cannabis greatly helps our community and has done amazing things for our state as a whole in general as well.
If it's purposes, I would suggest that you don't say brewery and say liquor store. Because that is, you see what I'm saying? Like it's more, if you say like a brewery, can I use marijuana at your store?
I, I guess I see what you're saying. Yes. Yeah, I can, I can rephrase that.
I mean, it's just to help you. But yeah.
But yeah.
Can I ask our police sergeant a question? Um, so do you this argument that it's, um, the timeframe at night? Is it your experience with any other communities? That it's true that it, there isn't an increased rate of crime later in the evening or?
I really can't speak to other communities. But what I know of the share of where we patrol, the only issues that we have with marijuana shops is when they're closed.
So it's actually better if they're open?
Isn't that interesting?
Cause they're gonna break in?
People aren't going into like they are at the gas stations, the alcohol, it's being stolen all day long, all night long in Meyer. We have the issues with marijuana.
They probably don't walk in with a gun and like hold them off?
That's
while they're open?
Stay, I'm still waiting on?
That's a rare
Yeah.
Like a bank robbery. It, it just, that, that type of stuff does not happen.
On like, on like a liquor store, gas station kind of thing where people walk in and
Like to
I mean, maybe it's, maybe, maybe the girl from Flint is showing her.
Like to add, a while ago it used to be more often. Now people are just stealing stuff because they aren't stopping them. Right? So they just walk in, grab the alcohol, walk out, and the store employees are not stopping them anymore. So they don't need to.
So the couple of break-ins that we've had have been when they're closed?
Done. That's, that we've had a break-in has been after hours. And for that though, is, and that's by, designed by the state, is we have to spend X, Y, and Z on security prevention and maintenance to ensure on that.
Remember.
That's where the statistics come in, is you're more likely to get broken in at night, which is why we move our product into a safe room every night and take it off the sales floor. So what they're getting on the sales floor is pennies on the dollar compared to what they would get. So.
Um, so what hours are you asking?
I'm really just looking for like
An eleven o'clock, uh, Thursday through Saturday. Uh, I don't need anything crazy. Um, the only exception to that is when we're doing events like our New Year's event where we're staying open well past, you know, eleven o'clock and we're, we're promoting businesses to stay open till twelve o'clock on New Year's. For special events, we take on, uh, under the consideration of what those timeframes are in a lineup for us. So I'm not looking for anything crazy.
Would that be for the Red Flannel Festival too, to stay open?
Typically, what we found in the last two years of operating to Red Flannel, our crowd dies down at the same time Red Flannel does. And generally, it's just a normal, steady pace the rest of the night. So it's just really trying to remove the stigma. They're both highly regulated industries and they both should be equally, uh, able to operate during the same hours. And it's all about equality and that's what I want to strive for.
Are the liquor stores open that late?
Well, two. Then you can buy Meyer or you can buy liquor there.
Yeah.
They're, they're legally able to, yeah, yeah, just not on Sundays. So.
Liquor at three o'clock, four o'clock in the morning at Meyer?
I'm pretty sure
You're cut off at two. Yeah, I'm pretty sure you're cut off at two. At noon on Sunday. Yep. Me too. But that's why I'm not, I'm not asking the city council to do anything crazy. I'm just, I, I want a little bit more uh, quality when it comes to the treatment of cannabis. We, we spend a lot of money preparing our facilities for the security. And I think we should be able to operate during the same business hours that the rest of the shops do.
That would include all of the marijuana businesses, the highway too?
So ideally, no, but you know, originally I did propose this for the
Social district, um, but then I did a little bit of research and just realized that we're just right outside the social district. So I restructured. So, right? So.
Got a couple of questions for you. Just, what's the average age of people that come into your shop, honestly?
We're looking over the, about forty-five percent are over the age of thirty-three. Uh, there are, you know, there are younger, but we're legally only able to sell over twenty-one. So.
Thirty-three?
Oh, forty-five.
At least in our store, but our metrics will probably do different than the rest of them. We're a mom and pop shop. We focus more on education rather than.
Is there typically a rush? Cause you guys close at nine fifteen. Is there kind of a rush at the end?
Yes. So, and that's kind of where this comes into factor, right? So we're a manufacturing community. So three forty, or three thirty is closed. That's where a typical rush hour for us. But then around that eight forty-five mark, we typically get more. So that nine fifteen cutoff, it works, but it doesn't work for a majority of our members of the community. And obviously, the community voted for this, so let's help them get the products that they voted for.
That little rush there. What would you say the average ages of people coming in?
I wouldn't want to give that information right now. I don't have it prepared, but if this was
Yeah. Is there younger people coming in, like older teens, younger twenties?
You know, the crime is down no matter what, right? There's, there's not a age discrepancy of who's going to commit the crime per se. But I think what it really comes down to is if you talk to a traditional smoker, they grab their product, they go home. That's what they want to do. That's what they're looking forward to. It's the same with people buying alcohol. They grab their product and they want to go home because that's where it's safe. Um, I don't think that us operating well past nine o'clock is going to increase anything. I think it's going to give our community members that, you know, again, voted for this, an opportunity to buy their products rather than trying to figure out how to sneak out of the office to meet, you know, that timeframe to get their product so they can enjoy it when they get home. I just want to make it more equal.
I mean, I guess another thing I got to bring up too is, cause I just graduated high school a couple of years ago. I have a lot of friends, you know? Oh, yeah, that was a big success, but, uh, is, I mean, we were night hawks, you know, growing up. I mean, that's, that's when we're active, you know? Especially on the weekends, on the holidays, we went to school the next day. Do you think there's going to be any problems with staying open later that, uh, it's going to affect, you know, these younger kids that are going to be going out as far as crime goes?
I think that's a statistic I can't give you. Um, that's not, that's not my area of expertise. I can't predict what may or may not happen. But what I can tell you is we've heavily, um, been involved in securing our facilities for such actions. Um, you know, we've spent well over thirty thousand dollars creating locking mechanisms and not to mention the amount of security cameras that have helped local, um, issues. Um, we just had a couple of little fires behind our building. And because we had those cameras, we were able to identify and hand that information over to the police. So I don't think we would have an increase, but I can't give you that information, honestly.
And it do have to be twenty-one to even, right? Well, yeah.
So, um, you, you weren't on council when we were passing the policy and we spent, oh my God.
I, I watched a lot of meetings.
Um, we went, and I'm trying to remember who all it was. It was me, Jerry Hall. Who, who went to the facility in Muskegon and toured it? You did?
A different town, but yeah.
Okay. And I asked, now this is before recreational marijuana was passed statewide. So it's just medical at the time. But I asked one of the, um, so we went and toured a facility in Muskegon. And I said, what is the average age of the people that use your product? Sixty-four. And it was about pain management. And I think you're still gonna have a lot of people.
I have more people over the age of thirty than I do over the age of twenty-one through thirty. I'll tell you that right now. We're, 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 we're an older shop. Don't get me wrong, but we don't see many twenty-one to twenty-seven. We'll see the occasional, but most of them are going to the other facilities where it's the brand recognition. Most of our, um, customers are going to be coming in here for a specific ailment that they've heard, uh, we can help with. Um, or just something to get high with. I mean, but yeah.
And two, and, yeah. Has there been any research done about the long-term effects of what marijuana does to the brain?
I don't think that's a
Conversation that we should really have. Um, the people voted for this and this is what the people wanted. Um, it's only my, um, ability is to give the people more extended hours so they can get the product that they voted on.
See as a council person, you know, I care about the long-term effects of my town. You know, I'm twenty-three. I care about, you know, my generation and what this town is going to look like in twenty, thirty, forty years. You know, so everything that I'm going to vote for is going to be, I'm going to keep that in mind. I'm going to keep the people, you know, what the will of the people is too, absolutely, you know? But I also want to look at the research too and see what's, what's this going to do, you know?
I think that's kind of the cool thing about where we're at in cannabis is now that we're actually do, able to do scientific or studies on cannabis, because it's been in prohibition for so long, we're finding more research that's coming out with it. So again, I can't speak on behalf of that. I'm not a doctor. I'm not a clinician. I'm not a researcher. What I can say is that generally that the people that come in, we genuinely treat and help remove pain. And I'll give you a personal, um, patient. My mom was diagnosed as stage, uh, four terminal cancer two years ago. She's been on hydrocodone for the last two years. In the last two weeks, who had been able to find a, uh, product that I sell on my shelf that has removed her pain and has been completely off pain medicine for the last two weeks. So I can't speak on behalf of that. That's why we have health departments. That's why we have epidemiologists. But what I can say is that what we have seen is we've seen people genuinely get the help that they need and fight opioid addiction and many other addictions that they've had previously with the help of cannabis.
Oh, basically here, um, talking about a business want more hours, um, we kind of, kind of stay in that, in that area right now. Um, so if, do we have any more questions in that general society?
You know, with all due respect to that, I would say that we're giving people more access to it, you know? When we're, when we're extending the hours, you know, and to me, I'm asking myself, is that right? You know?
We've already, we've already established that they can do it in the city. Um, you sell it. So that's, that's the only thing, which is okay. You can have your questions. It's not a big deal. I'm just saying, we've got to kind of try and stay focused a little bit.
Absolutely.
Come on in, Jerry.
I follow.
That's okay.
Sometimes life gets in the way of other
It does.
Yeah.
We're done.
Favorite, favorite. Okay, perfect.
Um, you deducted from my pay.
To, um, show
Tonight.
Gross.
Gross. Sorry, Mr. Gross.
I know.
Decided to grace us with his present. We're happy to see you.
You were okay. Um. Do we have any other questions?
Staff perspective, I mean, what is your consensus? Would you like staff and myself to bring this back for action? Um.
Like, would you, would you like a straw poll, Madam Mayor?
Would prefer to take action at the next meeting? Is this, is there a discussion? Yes.
Thanks, Mrs. Conley. Um, I, I would even be willing to vote on it tonight, but I'm, can, I also appreciate the contract that we talk about things more than once. And although, give me strength, we've talked about marijuana awful lot. But, um, I find the most compelling argument for having them open longer is it actually decreases the amount of time, because they get broken to when they're not open. So to me, that's the, um, that's the compelling argument. So I would say, I, my, my straw poll position is I don't have a problem with them being open longer.
Yeah, so you can go. That's no problem with that.
Jerry, we're on eight A with marijuana establishments. Extending hours Thursday through Saturday.
Straw poll.
I haven't heard the discussion. I'm, I'm a little bit of behind on everybody else, but I've thought about it since I've read about it and, uh, it is somewhat of a detriment to them and somewhat unfair. And, uh, I would have liked to have heard the presentation first, but, uh, I, I think under my circumstance, I'd like to hear a little bit more about it before I had a vote, but, uh.
Mrs. Hamel?
Well, I would vote today. I think it should be open as late as liquor places. I don't see any difference. It's safer in terms of them being open and like there's, I don't see a reason to keep it closed for longer. Doesn't make any sense.
I would just, uh, thanks for coming. Thanks for
Yep.
Thanks for educating me on a couple of things. I would want to have a little bit more discussion on it before we take any action.
All right. Would anybody like to make a motion?
Your straw poll was to not have a motion? It's a discussion item?
Well, we could, we could make a motion. That's what I'm saying. If somebody feels strong enough to make a motion tonight, they may.
I would make a motion to approve the extended hours until two o'clock in the morning every day.
Do you have a, you have a, you have a, from the clerk? Oh.
Yeah. I was wondering when that was going to come up, but yes. I'm like, let's go. I'm not supposed to have it. I'm cool with it.
Work on it. We'll bring it back next month.
Okay. Is there anything that you guys require from us that you want me to prepare for next meeting on? Or do I have enough information?
Research. I want to see the research of what it's done in the town, you know? Maybe some numbers, what it maybe does from, to the brain, you know? If you can bring me some charts or some numbers or
Doctor, I'm not going to pursue
Research that's out there, you know?
That's research to everybody is different, right? Where does this source come from? That's one of the big disinformations that's going on. I can present you with anything you want to see. Whether it's real or not, that's up for you to decide, you know, and
Something from Laura. Could they, do they have information like?
So what I could give you, and I could actually work on this with you, is I could get, obtain how much city, um, taxes that we've generated from all the facilities here in Cedar. Uh, that's something that we could easily obtain. Um, but I talked to EJ today, trying to get statistics of just how many break-ins that we've actually had. And they're still compiling data, uh, it's not something that most likely I'm going to be able to obtain unless I do a FOIA.
Right.
Go ahead.
I think that if we want that information, we're going to have to get it ourselves.
Yeah.
Like he said, I mean, he's, he can find all the information for it. You know what I mean?
Sure.
And, and for us to not know. So maybe if we, if we contact Laura, um, we can find out some of that information. Yeah.
I'm pulling money out of my pocket to get that information. Yep.
Just add a, so as a high school teacher and as a high school teacher who teaches populations that frequently struggle with substance abuse, marijuana is not the drug.
It was made out to be.
Well, it's not even, it's not even the drug. It's, it's, I mean, I can tell you, it's, it's not the one that the drug, Doug, the dogs come in and sniff for. It's not the ones the kids are getting. I mean, it's
Epidemic.
Yeah.
Yeah. In bathrooms for vaping right now, every single day during lunch. And it's, it's also, um, it's, it's pills.
All right, let's, um, let's stay in the general area of what we're trying to do here. Um, there, she's gonna, they're gonna try and write something up for us that
Reordinance? So this is a city council ordinance, but I don't believe so.
Am I correct, Madam Clerk?
Correct. This is just, we're just going to be amending. So under, under that, it's just getting with the lawyer, drawing up some, and then you guys approving that amendment. So.
So then Darla, can you get, like, before our next meeting, can you get that kind of out to us? We can all see. And then, um, if we have any good questions, we can get ahold of you and, um, do all that. Madam Mayor?
I need, uh, confirmation on the time. You want to be open till ten or eleven?
Uh, ideally, I have no problem operating past eleven, but I came today before you to, for eleven. But ideally, we would love to be open the same amount of hours that liquor stores currently operate at, but
More extended hours for, during local events, which we've talked before, it's harder to regulate that type of thing. So we'll have to think about that too. Yeah. I mean, well, if it's open until two, you can close at eleven, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
So I guess I mean, rephrase that. I came in here tonight.
At eleven, but I think after this discussion, let's just put it at two o'clock, which is the same as alcohol sales and leave it to the dispensaries to choose when they want to stay open and or close.
Cause that's more staff hours, which business would need to staff.
Correct. Yep.
It's going to determine.
Correct. And the, and the consumer purchases are what's going to dictate how long they want to stay open for. So. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
We're going to move on then into, uh, to discussion item eight B. Kent County Animal Control Ordinance. And Ms. Falcon, would you like to begin the discussion? And Ms. Falcon, would you like to begin the discussion?
So the city of Cedar Springs is the last community in Kent County, um, to basically not adopt the Kent County Animal Control Ordinance. So for example, if, um, an incident happens in the city of Cedar Springs, a, a dog bites a person, for, for example, we have to find a way internally to, to take care of that, handle the situation. If we adopt the Kent County Animal Ordinance, we can contact Kent County. They have staff to come and take care of that. Then we would need to amend our existing ordinance, take out everything that's covered by Kent County Ordinance. We would keep, we would still have miscellaneous items in our ordinance, the, the leash law, fencing in your yard, whatever. It, it's just the severe, um, cases that the Kent County Animal Control, we would be able to call them and they could come and help us with. So.
Question is to make sure that I'm understanding. Um, if we adopt the Kent County Ordinance, we can still have more of an ordinance? Than what they have? Okay.
Yeah, we will still have an ordinance for dogs on leashes, number of animals in your yard. Those items are not covered by the Kent County Animal Ordinance. So we would have to, our attorney would have to help me draft a red line version of the existing ordinance, pull out everything that's covered by the Kent County Animal Ordinance, keep in everything else that we want to keep. Um, at the end of our animal ordinance, um, not too long ago, we adopted the honeybee policies. All that would stay in our ordinance. Question, is that something you would want staff and I to move forward on?
Do you want to review the old ordinance too?
Yes.
Yep. Our attorney would have to help me with that. Pull out what's covered by Kent County. That's why I gave you both in the packet. The Kent County Animal Control Ordinance and then our current ordinance, we would have to amend.
I hear from us on what changes do you think that we thought might be good?
Well, I'm, I'm only proposing to pull out of our ordinance what's covered by the Kent County Animal Control Ordinance.
The whole ordinance. Okay.
What we need to pull out so we can call Kent County.
Yes.
The only thing you want to make sure you're not conflicting with what they are offering to do. Being the position I'm in, I have, uh, townships that I worked for. And it's beneficial. Like the manager has said, we still can have our ordinance that will control some of the things that are not in there. When we had our own police department, they were patrolling the city. Okay. So you could have them enforce it also if they wanted to. It's a little different with Sergeant Probst and, and the rest of the officers being able to do it under, I thought ladies, under our guidelines. So I, I think it's beneficial.
Well, do you have any thoughts?
I mean, I think that's good.
That helps with, like, dog bites and stuff? Straw poll, Madam Mayor? Um, no, I'm just, I wanted to know if anybody like, Mr. Brayden, did you have any questions or what, what are your thoughts?
I like it. I like it.
I could support that too.
Yes.
Yes. The big thing is their availability. Same manager has said, it's greater, uh, especially now we have the substation right here in town. That's a, uh, not that I want them to enforce solely our stuff, but it's just, uh, that's a lot easier.
We still have to do the, the rest of the animals and ordinances. Do we need any more information? Yeah.
I was going to say, I have, I have been asked to talk about chickens again at some point. I don't know if anybody else has.
I heard about it. No, I support.
But I mean, I recent, like in the last week and a half, I had someone come to me saying, could you again see about chickens? And I'm like, I can. Bike pole again, but I, just as a, it's worth, yeah. I don't, I, and for the record, I personally am not looking to have chickens. But I'm not, really not.
I want a pony.
You want a pony?
City attorney and have him draft, uh, do a red line version of what will be removed from our ordinance.
Bring it back. All right. And with no more discussion, we'll move on to communications. Are there any sessions or clarification needed on the communications provided to us? No.
We got some renewals for the.
All right, Department Rig Boris. City Manager.
Oh, there's a lot going on. Um, so now that the, um, Chief Job Description has been updated, we are going to go ahead and post that internally, see if there's candidates that throw their name in the hat. Um, if not, we'll post it externally. So we'll get that process moving. Um, just FYI, DDA for next Monday, there was no, um, agenda item, so we've canceled that meeting for next Monday. And January Planning Commission meeting has been canceled as well. I will be out of town that night as well as the city planner will be out of the country. So, um, we had nothing come in that would need to be put on the January agenda, so we went ahead and canceled that. Still waiting to hear from the, um, Michigan Department of Natural Resources on the trust fund grant. The announcement was supposed to be made yesterday. Um, talked to a couple of people today. If, if they met, they're not, they haven't published the list yet. Oh, keep your fingers crossed. Um, and on the list. So if, you know, X amount is allocated to this.
Last year, right? We were like one out.
Last year, we were like 350 points out of 500. Now we're 385 points out of 500.
Weren't we like, of the people that they, of the communities that they granted it to, weren't we like the next one on points wise?
Yeah. I didn't make the cut.
Some things given to me by the previous city manager with.
Um, so as soon as I know, I'll, I'll definitely announce that to everybody. Um, planning commission had, again, we received our first, um, solar panel application. There's a home in the city that's planning to put eight panels on the roof, which is now allowable. So that'll be kind of exciting to see. Um, still working with the city planner on rewriting the sign ordinance. Uh, we brought it back twice. I think we'll, we'll have to bring it back one more time and then hopefully we'll be at a final stage, but um, so far we've been able to take, like, the ordinance was 22 pages. We're down to like 16 pages. So we're getting there. Just, we just need to make it easier for people to understand. It's just.
On that, because I've read that and it's kind of a hot mess. So I appreciate, yeah.
I don't work that way, so I need it simple and so everybody can understand it. I met, um, last week and, um, at CTA and again this week, um, Autumn Mattson, um, who was in charge of CTA regarding, they have a grant application in with the Department of Labor right now for 1.7 million dollars. They're trying to build a student activities and fine art center on CTA's campus. Um, so they're just trying to get out and educate, you know, share their plans and educate the public on what they're trying to do there. I've offered her to come back to the February council meeting and do a little, maybe 15 minute presentation. Uh, January, there was too soon for them, so they chose the February council meeting. So you'll hear more about that, um, from the CTA folks. Very exciting. I think our community could utilize it. It would be open to the public and they have all their meeting with unbelievable amount of people to get some ideas and have it accessible to everybody. So that will be good. Um, that's all I have. Merry Christmas and happy holidays.
All right, Department of Public Works. Is Tanya on or Bill?
Tanya. Hi, how are you guys? Good. I don't have anything.
Okay. Well, that's good because we haven't had a bunch of snow and stuff, right?
Right. Hoping to get some soon.
Wonderful. So thank you. They're really just, just full and lovely. You all outdid yourselves.
The lights downtown?
Yes.
Yeah, that wasn't us, but thank you.
Doing it if not DPW.
Somebody?
Oh. Nice.
Tanya? Because I know we're not getting Jerry Hall on a ladder anymore.
No, I think the DDA hired somebody to do it. Wasn't us though.
It looked like Boy Scouts. I'm not. Renee Race has a question and an observation.
I noticed that, well, because it's dark at 3:00 PM now, that the inner, the crosswalk where you cross Main Street by the brewery, you cannot see people walking across the street because it's dark and you just see the lights coming at you this way. We stopped and luckily there was a truck in front of us. There was a probably 30 people that crossed that and I didn't even, we didn't even, we just saw.
Which is where kids would be, which they were, like a bunch of more kids.
Of light at that crosswalk and it, from both ways, you can't see people crossing.
So at Maple and Main Street?
It barely even covers around where the lamp is.
Of course, yeah, the brewery is, that crosswalk right on Main Street.
Okay.
I just will say that, like, really everyone, please be super careful when you're walking around out there in the dark. A student was in the district where I teach was hit going out to her mailbox and was killed and was hit by another student. And it's, I mean, there's this seven, there's a junior and a senior whose families are completely, so just, it's dark.
I just noticed that we need to do something there. It's not, can't see.
Good call. And people coming into the library, that's going to be a thing.
Okay, we'll put that on the list and see what we can do.
And maybe, maybe it's us, like maybe we need to au- authorize another light pole or maybe we need to, I mean, not saying that's necessarily DPW's fault that it isn't, but good observation that that's.
They can, uh, observe and think, tell us what they think would work there.
Yeah.
Much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Sergeant Probst?
Hello?
Do you have a report for us?
I don't have anything. Do you have any questions for me? Reference that animal control issue, we can still carry the ordinances that we have over into a different area. The problem is, is ours are under the animal control ordinance. The Kent County Sheriff's Department cannot enforce animal control inside a municipality that has their own animal control. So we can't enforce any of it. As long as it doesn't conflict with our ordinances, like Jerry said, it's okay to have it different area under miscellaneous or whatever it might be, so that our code enforcement officer can enforce it. So the code enforcement officer will not be able to enforce the Kent County ordinances. So you want to keep things in there that we still want the code enforcement officer to do on a regular basis over into a different area. I think we'll be working with Darla and, uh, the lawyer and figuring out what those ordinances are that we still want our code enforcement officer to do, even though they're, the, the sheriff's department also has those ordinances, but we want the code, code officer to pay more attention to.
Mm-hmm.
Comment on that?
Sure may.
Thank you for your rules. Uh, again, most of all, you know what my positions are at the townships. Uh, it doesn't make a difference in the workload that the person at the county who was working part-time at, so much easier to say, we'll call the county. So, so.
It takes a lot of liability off the city as well. So there's storage of the dog, there's confiscation of the dog. They have to deal with, with the Kent County Animal Shelter instead of having to deal with the city and the liability the city has of taking that dog under possession and those type of things. So it, it helps out the city.
All right, Fire Department Deputy, Deputy Fire Chief Detlaw.
Well, uh, I don't really have anything other than what was in the report. Um, if you have questions, we can go through that. I am happy that the city has formally recognized Marty for his 44 years of service. It's no small amount. And he will be missed.
Mrs. Nelson?
We are in full swing presidential primary preparations. Um, I've been sending out lots of communications to the public and residents regarding signing up the election inspector. You guys probably saw in the tax bill, we had a flyer printed and put in that tax bill as well. Um, we've been putting out on our social media. We've been reaching out to organizations, um, volunteer groups, churches, any organization that will potentially pass the message along. So if you have groups or organizations, um, that you want to pass that along to, please do. You guys all received an email today. Feel free to pass that along. Other than that, have a great, happy holiday. We'll see you guys in 2024.
Going over the training sessions, but I didn't see anything online training. Is that a new?
Unfortunately, with all of the changes with Prop two, they have removed training for the new early voting. They are not permitting that to be online. Um, because there is so much change, they want to have everybody in person, um, basically able to ask questions, a back and forth dialogue rather than just an, an online version. We're thinking that the county may continue to, um, online training in the future, but it won't be available for this time around.
Oh, and you don't have to be a city resident to work on our city election. Okay, that's important stuff. Thank you.
Uh, just because people are going to ask me, so for the election, uh, it's a nine day period, you said?
Nine days of early voting. It'll be, um, 8:30 to 4:30 every day, um, the nine days prior. So it'll start Saturday. Um, and then go until that neck, the following Sunday before the election. It's, it's in my report, um, and it's in the email as well. Um, I don't have it memorized off the top of my head yet, but.
They have, they have to come and see you and fill out some kind of form, taking it?
And then they'll have to do training and then they would have to sign up to work some of those days. It's a three hour training that the county puts on. Um, they're, they're provided throughout the county. Um, some as close as Cortland Township, some down on like 28th Street and whatnot. So you do have to declare a party, um, if, to be an election inspector. And we do have to have as equal as possible representations for Democratic Party and Republican Party.
Means if we don't have the volunteers on election day.
Won't be an option. We will have them.
That's right.
We're going to have, um, eight to five shifts. So we would love for people to sign up for one or two days at a time. If they're not able to and they can only work one day, we'll take them for a day.
To fill those nine days.
We have zero people signed up for any of the Monday through Friday shifts. We have a handful of people signed up for the weekend shifts, but we're really struggling finding people to sign up during regular working hours because they're also working a normal, um, job as well. So.
Kind of writing from Lansing about what's, what happens if we just don't have the volunteers?
Things that Lansing is not addressing and that is not addressed currently. So.
Thank you.
Training and all of the hours worked are paid as well.
Don't have to be a city resident.
Do not have to be a city resident.
How much it pays? That might be a little bit of an incentive.
Currently it is $12.33 an hour.
Not amazing, but.
And how many, how many people do you need for the eight to five shift in a day?
Three people preferred four.
And they have to go to the training first.
And they have, and we have to have equal numbers. So it has to be four because.
Equal as possible. So we are required to have three. So in circum, in certain circumstances, you could have two of one party and one of another. Preferred is four, so that way you can have two and two. Training as well.
And what was I just going to ask? It just slipped my mind. Come back to me.
Yeah.
Information overload. Information overload.
This was structured from a ballot initiative, not an act of Congress.
There's a proposal to change, to enact that, nine days.
Uh, when do we need these people signed up by?
Possible, so that way we can get training established. Um, training is starting as early as January sixteenth. Um, I'd like to have all of our workers lined up and signed up for all of the days by that point, so we can ensure that they're trained.
Officials?
And as an election official, work on Election Day and any of the early votes as well. However, you cannot be on the ballot, so.
Any questions? I know people are gonna ask me that, though.
It, does the state reimburse our city for any of these costs and expenses?
Reimburse for presidential primary, and that will include all of the training and all of the pay for election inspectors and the ballots and the materials and the supplies and everything. Um, so to put into perspective, um, the state four years ago spent about, mm, two million dollars on the presidential primary. They're looking at at least ten million, um, potentially more, so. For the primary election, for every jurisdiction in the state of Michigan.
Or they have to work it.
We gotta buy a new machine.
Have people come out to vote? I'm gonna be furious.
Very big cost to the city, cost to the taxpayers, so.
As though. Lots, lots of eighteen-year-olds are gonna show up.
I hope so.
I can tell you. And you can register earlier now, younger.
What do you mean by that?
To be thirty days before you turn eighteen. Now, it's six months.
You go to the Secretary of State, um, and they are looking at changing the legislation to to potentially change that to a little bit younger, to sixteen. That hasn't hap- happened yet, as far as I know, um, but it is proposed.
Dude is telling me about it.
The proposal would be that they would register at sixteen, but they are not able to vote until they turn eighteen.
It used to be you couldn't register until thirty days before your eighteenth birthday.
When they get their license.
Yeah.
To register, yeah.
Finance Director, Emily Landon.
I guess I have to have the microphone. So, I've been busy working on annual reporting. Um, our audit is now complete, finally, so that's exciting. Um, so, in the January council meeting, Doug, um, from Reddvel and Hefner will be here, um, to go through that audit with all of us. Yes, very exciting, I'm sure. You can't wait. Um, so, we'll also have some other annual reports in the January meeting as well. I just finished up our, um, MERS retirement report, so you'll see that next month. Um, Act Fifty-One is now complete. Um, qualifying statement is complete, um, through the state, and then, um, the final one that I need to complete is the F-sixty-five. So, I saved that one for last, because it sounds like that one's got a little bit of time involved in it, so, um, I'll be focusing on that in the next week or so. Um, but otherwise, you, um, have seen the first report in this agenda, the CVTRS, um, so that's in there. Um, that was prepared, um, by a third party, um, through MuneNetrix. Um, they do that for us. Um, we just gotta get them information and they put together that nice presentation in there, so, um, good, some good information in there, so if you get a chance to look through there, um, there's some, some good detail in there, so. Um, but that's really what my focus has been on lately, so, hope everybody enjoys the holiday season.
Will you not have anybody from code enforcement or building inspection? Yeah, she was for a while. Um, any questions in the board and commission meetings, uh, meeting minutes? Um, the library board meeting was awesome. I attended, um, along with Mrs. Powell and Mrs. Conley, and it's, it's actually, I have, it's looking great.
Yes.
Looking great.
Right.
It was.
Officials training last night, so he enjoyed that. Good information.
Okay, um, moving on, I would entertain him.
Question about the code enforcement? Just, I got an email that I then got some phone calls, and I then responded, because apparently I'm the only one that got an email, and I got a response back, "Is our code enforcement officer, do you all have a solution for whatever this is with the parking or the traffic thing for City Impact?"
They, they, their board met and they feel, um, alternating weeks.
I didn't know if we needed to do something with, like, directing the traffic behind, or, I don't know. I, I knew nothing about it until I got shouty things in my.
By having an event, so, I mean, we're working with them to, you know, give them suggestions and whatever, so. They're gonna, they're gonna try something new in January and we'll see where it goes.
I was gonna ask our enforcement officer if she had suggestions.
Yep, we did. That's why we met with them initially. Yep.
Thank you for that.
I would say today, over there, it went way smoother than it's been going. You know, so I think what we're putting in place there is gonna work. Yes, a lot better. So, there's a big need and, yeah, it's so hard to cram so many people in in some places, you know, when the need is that big. So, whatever we can do to make it as easy as possible.
Did we wanna let the public know what we're talking about, since it was brought, brought to the public?
Distribution Day at City Impact, it's Thursdays, and from what I understand, they used to have two groups come on the same day. Well, now, they're gonna do one group one week, the other group the next week.
But it's.
It's.
More food.
So, it, not like we're taking food away from people. The availability of food is still there, but just to cut down on the congestion of traffic and too many people in one place at one time, so.
And if we could not give out my. Got it. I don't, I'm just, whoever gave out my cell phone number, I would like that to not happen. So that I'm not getting phone calls about why food is being stolen from people.
Close session pursuant to Section Eight D of the Open Meetings Act to discuss making an offer to purchase real property.
I'll second that motion.
I will make that motion?
I'll support it.
Session. All right, let's do a roll call. Mrs. Powell?
Yep. Yes.
Mrs. Race?
Yes.
Mr. Marvel?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamel?
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yep.
And Mayor Atchison votes yes. So, seven-zero. And we're gonna go into closed session. And then we'll. Recording? Time I would entertain a motion to.
In session.
Session.
Make a motion to go back into open session?
Discussion. Okay. Powell?
Yes. Yes.
Mrs. Ray.
Yes.
Mr. Gross?
Yes.
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 Oh, it's yes.
So I'd like to make a motion. The purchase of a real, of real property and to authorize the city clerk and mayor to officiate the real estate purchase agreement.
I will second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Very none?
We're in good hands.
Yeah. Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Marvel?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Conley?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Atterson, mayor, votes yes. Okay, now we're gonna go, we're gonna do council comments. Mrs. Conley?
Thank you to our clerk for making this all happen with the new election. And thank you to our wonderful city manager who keeps putting out fires and fixing things when people are frustrated, when things don't go the way that one would hope. And Mrs. Hamel, it's been a pleasure to serve with you.
So.
We know where you are.
I have a truck. I have a truck. If you need help moving. So for real, I have a truck and I have a trailer. So.
And vans.
So yes, I do. And I have vans. But I mean, if you need like big things.
Yeah, may the force be with you. Mr. Gross?
My apologies for being late. Like I said, sometimes there's other things that interfere with. And I kind of had to make a choice tonight. Not anything of a personal type, but it was my other occupations. Okay. Which took much longer than what I figured out. But I appreciate all the work that's gone on by this board this past year. I think it's been a productive year. I think there's things that we are progressing with that may have gone a little stray in the past. But I, I appreciate everything. I especially appreciate the city manager and the way she has stepped in and taken over and mended some fences or attempting to that may have been broken down in the past. It's so valuable to have someone in that seat that people feel happy with and being capable to talk to. And I appreciate it greatly. Uh, Ms. Hamel, uh, you are gonna be missed. We may not always have agreed, but I, your, your thought process was always good and it was thought out and considered. So the best of everything to you. And you will have to deal with me at the other location you're going to be living in. So. All season greetings to you all.
Yes, happy holidays. Sixth night of Pana.
Okay, so everybody already knows, but I, I'm closing on my house tomorrow and it is just in Solon Township. So I won't be very far away. I'll still be going to the library and stuff. Thank God we kept it. Um, just want to say thank you to all of you guys. You guys have been so awesome, so fun to work with. I've learned so much. And it's just really cool to do that with you guys. So thank you. Um, Brayden, keep on asking questions. I totally support getting all the information that you need personally to vote your way. So keep truckin'. Darla, I am so proud to have hired you or helped to hire you your. Really appreciate it. I'm glad that the city gets to keep you. And Rebecca, I'm gonna miss you. I'll be in here. I'll probably, maybe I can mark an election. Um, but yeah, so this will be my last meeting. I'm closing on my house tomorrow and I will fit in my actual resignation.
Mr. Marvel?
Uh, yeah, so happy to be here. Super happy to be here. I love this town. And I, I was asking him a lot of questions and I think I kind of stressed it a little bit about the marijuana that I, uh, you know, for me personally, I just wanna, I wanna see this town thrive. And I at 10 years, 20 years, 30 years, 40 years down the future and I wanna, I wanna see this town as good as it is now. That long, that far down, you know, I'm 23 and I want to see my generation succeed. So I was asking him a lot of questions because I'm a little skeptical about the whole recreational marijuana. So I, I thank you guys for your patience with that, you know, and I, I'm keep, I'm reading into it. I'm doing the research into it. So as it becomes available. But Ms. Manager, thank you so much for all the help you've given me. And I totally agree with like my colleagues here that you're doing a fantastic job for this community. A lot of people appreciate you. So thank you. And yeah, just Merry Christmas to all of you. And I look forward to it and I just keep praying blessings over this town. So.
Mrs. Powell?
Well, I will miss you, Ashley. I really always appreciated how you set everybody straight about why we're here. We're here to represent the people of Cedar Springs. No questions about that. Yes, I really always appreciated that. And Mr. Marvel, glad to see you join us. It's, it's scary at first, a lot to learn, but I appreciate your stepping in. Um, I do miss Molly and she was also very wise, but her time was up. And, um, I want to talk to Darla about getting a tour of our clean water plant. If you could arrange that. Would love, right, oh, it is an amazing thing. So I would love to see it again, too.
The Jerry Hall.
The Jerry Water Treatment Plant.
So if we can do that or anybody else wants to go, it's, it's something to see. So Merry Christmas to everybody and see you next year probably, if not before.
Mrs. Conley? I went first. I'm sorry, I'm going by the, I had my order and now I'm going by Rebecca's order. Mrs. Ray. Mrs. Ray.
It's been a crazy year. It's hard to believe that 2024 is just around the corner. I feel like 2023 was like three years in a row. So just long, but we've learned, we've grown. We've met people throughout this year that we've never met just because of certain things that we were going through. I hope that we see some of these people back to support us even that they're 100% involved in. Um, having the public here is really a big thing for us. We don't like to see empty seats. We want to see people here being involved and, um. Also, Ashley. The planning commission, I said, I think you need to be city council member. It's easy. Don't worry about it. You don't have to worry about anything. It's quick. Planning commission meetings are so much longer. And then it was like a month later, it just became. Why did you do this to me? Why did you do this to me? And I'm like, because I know you could do it and I know that you could hang, you can hang tight with us. So we love having you on here. We'll miss you deeply. I won't miss driving you to this every single week or every single meeting, but I'll miss it.
A chauffeur.
And, um, I think that's it. Merry Christmas to everyone and a happy new year coming up.
Looking forward to, um, 24, especially for our board. It's, uh, I, I enjoy this. I will, I promise I'll get in a rhythm and know what I'm doing pretty soon. It's not really easy once you're up here.
You're doing great.
Also, um. Like I said, all, all in the past, it doesn't matter, um, if you vote yes or no. It doesn't matter if you're with the, the majority or the minority. We always celebrate the voting of your conscience and voting for what you believe is right for Cedar Springs. So, um, I mean, it, it, it doesn't matter. Ask the questions. Get the answers that you're looking for. Sometimes we have to get them outside of here, look for them ourselves. The staff here is so good. I want to thank you, Ms. Mrs. Falcon for helping me with the information that I need. I call up, you've got information, you know, really fast. Don't ever think that you can't tell me I got something going on and it'll, it'll take me a while because I, you know, it's never taken more than a day. Um, Rebecca, uh, Mrs. Nelson, I just cannot, or Johnson, I'm sorry. Mrs. Johnson, I kept calling you Nelson a couple of times. Um, the way that you run the elections and get everything together is awesome. I mean, it, it, we need more people to come out for the elections. We need more people. If you, if you're not liking what's happening with election, get involved. You don't know what's going on until you're there, just like this board. Until you serve on a board, you don't know what, you don't know all the data. You don't know all the information. You don't know everything that's going on. So all I can say is get involved. People get involved and let us know what you want. And for that, Merry Christmas and we're adjourned.